Our auditor. Trying to get into seat to present.
Thanks. I was recording.
All right, we'll call the meeting order at five thirty-one P M. And we'll ask Tramon Duff to lead us in a prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for this great city, Breckenridge. Lord, thank you that you have given us a heart for this city. Lord, we pray for everybody who is called to be a great steward of this, uh, of our town. Lord, I just pray that you would give them wisdom, that your love would overflow in their hearts, and Lord, that you would, uh, speak to them in a way that you always do, uh, with us. And so, Father, we, we pray for, uh, every decision that is made here tonight, Lord, that I pray that it glorifies you. Uh, Lord, we pray for those that are, that protect this city, that could be in harms way. We pray to hedge a protection around them, that you would keep them safe, and Lord, that, uh, you would prosper Breckenridge, uh, all for your glory. Father, we pray for those less force fortunate in this city, Lord, and we just pray that, that, uh, uh, they would be able to, uh, break out of, uh, the bondage and the situations that they're in, Lord. Thank you for, uh, being here this evening, Lord, and we just thank you for, uh, being in our hearts and living inside of us. We give you praise. We give you the glory. It's in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand as one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of the world.
Open floor, do we have anybody to speak?
Um, I did not have anyone that decided to speak in here.
Then we'll go down to staff reports or discussion only. No action may be taken on items listed under this portion of the agenda, other than to provide general direction to staff or to direct staff in place such items of a future agenda for action. So I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Well, I am happy this evening to present, um, the employee of the month. Um, we're, as you know, we're taking turns with each department and the department head is, um, making those, um, designations for employees within their own department. So I have admin, and so that's basically the department heads and here, everybody in the admin building. So, um, I am happy to announce that the employee of the month is Lacy Botts. If you can come up here, Lacy. So I really appreciate Lacy. Uh, we call her Li- Little Miss Sunshine. Um, she spreads joy and cheer and smiles wherever she goes. She makes sure that she goes to everybody in the building and welcomes them into the morning. She's always very helpful. Um, she is kind of the catch-all position and constantly just doing things for people. Um, you know, she came into us from walker sales and you were there for six weeks, I believe, and, um, you know, she didn't really have local government experience, um, here at the city, but she has just done a phenomenal job. She's super intelligent. Um, just go get her. She takes the initiative to do things and really exemplifies what our core values are. And that's, you know, to be bold, to be responsible, to be excellent, um, to be compassionate and to be knowledgeable. She's learning and she's learning quickly. Um, when people call, um, I think people would note when, when they call up to the city that they've got a friendly voice on the other line. And so I'm just really happy to present this to Lacy Botts.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, okay, so, um, on the city business, we do have some department head reports. I did want to, um, start with P D. And I wanted to introduce our interim, um, police chief that is here. It's Tommy Williams. So if you would stand up and maybe say hi, say a few words and, um, not a whole speech, but he's already been, he did the crowd running, met with the staff over at, um, we had an all hands on deck meeting Monday evening at six P M. And introduced himself. Obviously, he's already been meeting people and he's already met several folks in the community. So, and this is his second day here. So Tommy?
Well, I am happy to be here. Um, I, I think the best thing about being here so far is just I'm fascinated with the history of Breckenridge. It's, it's just everywhere you, you go and it's, uh, everyone I've met's been very, very kind and very cordial and open. And I had a conversation with the mayor today. He's got some great D P S stories. So, uh, I think I'm gonna like it. I'm, I'm gonna enjoy my time I spend here.
Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Glad to have you here again, Tommy.
Um, we also have a report, um, for parks. So I'm gonna let, um, Stacy come up and talk about the community garden and, and the Methodist Church.
Well, it is getting close to that time again. Um, the grass is beginning to green up, even though it's still February. We've had some pretty days. Uh, Good Friday's coming March the twenty-ninth. It'll be here before we know it. Uh, several years ago, the Methodist Church came to us and, uh, they were having issues of fulfilling their needs in their food bank. And so they wanted to, uh, join with us and we put together a, a community garden, uh, three hundred North Smith. It's got a little sign out front. We ended up calling it Gardenville. And, uh, we rocked along a few years and, and the Methodist Church took a step back. And the city's been, uh, solely operating it over the last few years. Well, uh, the Methodist Church is once again having issues with their food bank. So they reached out and they're wanting to pick up again gardening over there. So we've got a section that the, uh, community gardeners use. It's got about fifteen raised beds and about fifteen short rows that they can plant in. And on the other side of it, the Methodist Church will take, it's about a forty-foot by a hundred-foot area with about six raised beds in that. Uh, they've got some youth organizations in their church that are gonna help do that. And, uh, so we're gonna get that back going and hopefully, uh, help out their, their food bank, help out their need. And if you've got anybody, know anybody that wants to garden, well, that's a spot. If we outgrow that, we'll, we'll find some place where you can make more raised beds or whatever we need to do to make that operate. But that's, uh, that's ongoing.
Okay, great. Well, it's great that, um, they're willing to fulfill a need. Um, you know, they're, they've got a, and I know a lot of people here at Breckenridge know this. They've got a food bank over there through the church. Um, but having fresh produce is really gonna be a bonus. And so having their youth do that, I think it's a great benefit for the city. Um, the other thing I wanted to go just let you guys know, our bulk water where people get that is at the water treatment plant now and has been for several months. Uh, with the recent freeze that we had, um, we have to repair, replace the meter there. And so it is out of service right now. So I wanted to make that announcement. Um, you know, we've got the meter on order and as soon as we get that here and get it installed, we'll open that back up for folks. Um, I did want to give a recap on the open house. You know, we had an open house, um, regarding all the, um, construction projects that are coming down the pipe. Um, and we had a pretty good turnout. Of course, we wish there would have been more folks, um, that came out to see all the great things that are happening in Breckenridge. Uh, we've got street improvements, um, coming down the pipe. We've got the T W D, uh, water wastewater projects that will be under construction. Um, later this year, they're in design right now. Um, the downtown revitalization project, which is just right here, um, the sidewalk improvements. And in fact, I talked to the engineer today and so we'll probably be going out, uh, for the R M P in about thirty days for that project. Um, and of course, that was a grant project. Um, and then we've got the comprehensive planning project, uh, which we will be, um, and that's basically an update of the comprehensive development plan. And so, um, we will be, um, having a presentation with P and Z coming up later. Um, and then, um, we'll bring that, uh, you know, getting them involved and then, um, we'll be moving that forward. Uh, we do have the park improvements, which I'm gonna talk about a little bit more here in a second. Uh, we're also, as we discussed, we are looking at a, that's a part of a lot of opportunity, um, for a splash pad. And, um, that submission will be, um, this summer. And what we're looking at, and we'll bring that back to you once we have the details, but is basically, um, replacing the baby pool, um, with that splash pad. That's the area that that would go in. Um, and then Tech Dot was there at that meeting. So they had some project fact sheets. All of these are online. We did post all of these projects. Uh, in papers online, uh, and Tech Dot provided one pagers for, um, one eighty-three, the proverbial one eighty-three. Um, and then one eighty, they're gonna be milling and relaying, um, from Rose, um, West, um, past town actually. Um, and they will keep lanes and traffic open for that. And then, of course, the intersection improvement, we did the utility relocation at F M thirty ninety-nine, uh, thirty ninety-nine, they're doing the intersection, straightening it out. And so they are working on it. So, um, we do have some extra packets here. If anybody wants one tonight, um, these are online. Um, did want to highlight, um, on a lot of park projects are included in, um, the improvements that are slated. So Stacy's been doing a phenomenal job with that. Um, we do have, and you know, and just as a reminder, this all came out of the strategic planning. Um, you know, with start of the staff, the mayor and commissioners, we've got the community leaders together, the B E C, um, the, uh, B I S D was involved in that. The Calumine Judge was involved in that. Um, and, um, you know, we came out and we took it out to the community. The citizens were involved in that. And we did a survey. And so we came up with five basic goals. And so we've been making progress on those goals. Um, one of those is investment in infrastructure and one is promoting Breckenridge as a, you know, a destination for tourism and others. So for shopping and all that. So what's going on at the foundation park? Um, and, uh, downtown development council was involved in that. And I know Blake was involved in that as well. Um, but we are doing, we repaired the fountain at the foundation park. So that has been completed. We camouflage, we couldn't move the apparatus to the side underneath the ground, um, but we did camouflage it. Um, and then the electricians have been, um, I mean, the Turk people came and removed the grass. And then the electricians went out and did some lighting, um, you know, some of the uplighting, um, and then, uh, Turk folks will be back out hopefully next week. Um, depending on weather, but they believe they'll be finishing that project out within two weeks. The Turk part is the last part of that project. So, um, a lot of exciting things going on in Breckenridge. So just wanted to bring you up to the home. And that's, that's it for the city manager, uh, report. And then we've got, you know, the events that are coming up. You can see the cemetery cleanup. Um, and the boat pickup is February fifteenth. If the city officers will be in, that's in this day. Um, Stacy, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about the cemetery cleanup to do this on, on an annual basis.
Yes, it's an annual basis. Uh, basically what we'll do is go in and any old flowers that have deteriorated, uh, any trinkets or things that are not allowed on graves and all this is the time that we'll collect all that stuff and folks can come out and put out their new flowers. And it's on an annual basis. So most everybody knows that we're gonna do this and that way they can come put out their first, their fresh flower. And, uh, anybody has any questions, they're welcome to call. It's something we do every year.
Nice. Do you run across a lot of that, just items that have to be picked up?
Yes.
There's a lot. I figured there was times I've been out.
And the rules are posted on the front gate.
Yeah.
We have rules that we hand out. I believe they're on the website. And, you know, when people come to, uh, fill out the paperwork or funeral service, that's explained to them at that time. Uh, and a lot of times folks just don't play the role.
Okay. And then, um, lastly, I did want, um, I just wanted to give you guys an update on the water leaks and some sewer stops that we had. Um, and I've asked, uh, Public Works Todd Heatherson to come up and share on that.
Nothing's, uh, nothing's changed. We still got leaks after leaks after leaks. Uh, as y'all all know, this, this town's got old infrastructure and we're dealing with that daily. Um, the cold front that we've just had, it, it did it pretty good. We, we did twenty-nine leaks right after that freeze. And of course, right after the freeze, then we start getting warm-ups and that just makes things a little worse. But we have gone from twenty-nine down to about ten to twelve now. So we are catching up. Some of the leaks that you drive by and see, if you don't see us out there working on, rest assured, they're on the list. We aren't going to get to them. But there's some that are bigger than those that you see. So we are working on those. So, uh, we appreciate you being patient with us. We will get them all fixed. We'll get caught up. We'll, we'll keep making improvements on it. The backhoes that y'all put for us that come in and they have helped tremendous. Uh, so we're not having to stop and fix machines here and there. We're rocking it. You know, so everything is going fairly good speed. I'd always like it to be faster, but we deal with what we deal with. And sewer stops, we all know about sewer stops. Uh, we do have a new back truck here. So our sewer stops are getting a lot fixed a lot quickly now. So everything's moving quite along good. So we're, we're pleased. Do y'all have any questions? In the holler. I'm always here.
I appreciate y'all for working all those nice man.
They're doing a good job.
No action taken in any of this consent agenda. Any commission member, mayor requesting on the consent agenda to be taken up for individual consideration. If y'all will look at five, six, and seven, and then we'll, uh, take a motion on all three of those.
I move to approve considered agenda items, right, because that is presenting. Second.
Move the second all in favor? We'll go down to action items. I'll make discussing any necessary action regarding annual audit physically year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand.
So we've got our auditor, Daniel Hungerbird, on his live streaming, um, because he's, uh, recovering. And so Daniel, hopefully you got on and. Okay, he's gonna be. You do have, um, each of you do have a copy of the audit in front of you. So who's gonna go through this, um, highlights some of the items for you? All right. We're trying to unmute you, Daniel. Daniel, if you can hear us, if you can unmute yourself, we're, it looks like we was trying to. Well, first comes the show we can give on the phone.
Daniel, it's on here.
Apologize. Okay. Well, okay, if you can just talk loudly, Daniel.
Okay, uh, could you please apologize? I tried to unmute. Appreciate being able to begin this way. Um, this is again, Daniel Hungerbird, with George Morgan's name for the audit for September thirty to two thousand twenty-three. Uh, our auditor's report is on page one. It's a unmodified or a clean opinion. Says the financial statements are fairly presented and avoided because we generally accepted accounting principles. And next I wanted to look at page eleven. Page eleven is a comparative, uh, statement of activities for the general fund. Uh, the, uh, general fund had revenues, uh, four point two million. It's about four hundred thousand increase, ten percent. The, the biggest increase was property taxes. The, uh, property taxes increased three sixty-eight thousand. That's because this year you lowered the I N S rate and increased the rental rate a little bit. And then the values of property increased fifty-seven million. Expenses for the general fund were four point two million. That's about a ten percent increase also. The, uh, biggest increases were in the general government. That was a consultant, I T services and upgrades. Uh, and then you replaced A C units in around the city. And the public safety increased to a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That was primarily personnel costs because you had more positions filled. The fund balance of the general fund increased three hundred and sixty million, oh, four hundred and sixty million dollars. If you look at the two years, in the past two years, your fund balance has increased nine hundred and fifty thousand. So the general fund's had a couple of strong years. Uh, next I wanted to look at page nineteen. First column is the general fund. Your unassigned fund balance was about one and a half million. That's what you have for carrying forward for the next year. And it's about uh, thirty-seven percent of your annual expenses in the general fund. I also wanted to point out the second column, that's your debt service fund. During the year, your debt service fund balance decreased about one point four million. And that's because this year you redeemed one million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand bonds early. That's because of those bonds you redeemed with fund balance. So the digital fund and your general fund has had a good year. And next I wanted to look at page twenty-three. You take your water, wastewater, and the sanitation funds. But they all have positive, unrestricted positions. But the waterfront having one point seven million and the wastewater fund also having, uh, one point four million. On the, uh, following page is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance. The water and wastewater fund had increases in net position. Some of the, the changes, your wa- uh, water and wastewater charges for services increased five hundred and fifty thousand. That's because you sold twenty-two million more gallons of water and you also had a rate increase this year. Uh, it, the expenses of those funds increased about three hundred thousand, primarily due to increases in repairs, repair supplies and chemicals. On, uh, page sixty-seven is our report on internal control compliance. Uh, we did not have any, uh, non-compliance to report. And we did not find any material weaknesses in internal control. Uh, the audit went smooth and no issues. One of the changes in the report is you did not have a single audit this year because you did not spend seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal works. That could change next year once you start the, uh, water development work projects. Are there any questions?
Are the people shaking their head no? Okay, um, they're shaking their head no. Daniel, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the technical difficulty. You know, know what happened. I see the love hate relationship. I see why didn't you fix it for me? Sorry.
Have a motion on that then?
I move to accept the annual audit for fiscal years two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Out of nine, discuss and any necessary action regarding approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash show three, ordering a municipal general election to be held on May the fourth, two thousand twenty-four for the purpose of elected offices of mayor in commission place one and commission place two.
All right. Well, it's that time of year again, just every, every year we go through this. Um, this year, the positions that are up for election are the mayor, um, and commissioner place one and commissioner place two. Those, uh, those were opened up for candidates to file for a place on the ballot, um, on January the seventeenth. And they can file until February the sixteenth at five P M. Um, the standard election day for this year is gonna be May fourth. Early voting will be April twenty-second through the twenty-sixth and April twenty-ninth through the thirtieth from eight to five here at city hall, just like last year. Um, and so long as the school holds an election, um, an election day on May the fourth will be held at the Breckenridge I S D Athletics and Fine Arts Facility, located at six oh seven West Second Street. If the school does not have an election, it will revert back here to city hall, um, like last year. So, um, do you have any questions or anything about that?
We'll get on that then.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three, ordering a municipal general election to be held on May fourth, two thousand twenty-four for the purpose of electing the offices of mayor and commissioner place one and commissioner place two. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys. Out on ten, discussion any necessary action regarding approval ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash foot four, ordering a special election to be held May the fourth, two thousand twenty-four for the reauthorization of a local sales tax in the city of Breckenridge at the rate of a quarter percent, point two five percent, to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets.
So as you know, excuse me. So as you know, we've had an election every four years and this has been since two thousand four, um, where a quarter of percent of the revenue from sales tax is collected and then spent on street improvements. So, um, we have been, you know, saving. That's what allowed us to do primarily the improvements to Seventh Street, Rose and Elliot. And so the four years to recall that election is up, so if you guys want to continue that. You would support this and call the election. And if you don't call the election, then you wouldn't continue that, so that's a decision we'll need to make.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four, ordering a special election to be held on May fourth, two thousand twenty-four. For the reauthorization of the local sales tax in the city of Breckenridge at a rate of a quarter percent. To continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Item eleven, discussion any necessary action regarding an encroachment agreement with New Destination Church for parking in a portion. Of what is formerly Dire Street in the original town of Breckenridge.
So if you can go to the picture, yeah, so can you go to the other one first? So this is, as you know, we did a sealed bid for the sale of the old senior building. And that was sold to New Destination Church and. We did a survey and you can see where the green box is. That's the land. That we sold. That unfortunately, that, that church sits outside of that property. And so what we did was Dire Street. For whatever reason, I mean, it got built when it got built out, a little bit outside, a lot of it outside of that property. So Dire Street, we discovered was not closed. And that's an eighty-foot right of way, so we went through the process of. Deeding the south half, which is forty feet to the church. And then the city retains the northern half because we're the property owners to the north because that's how it goes if you go to the abutting property owners. So if you go to that next picture, but yeah. So if you see that little patio porch right there, about ten feet north of that is where the forty feet. That we deeded over to them in the sale of that property, which was completed last week. Now they, you know, they've been using that for parking, it's been a right of way, open right of way, now technically we own it. And so this encroachment agreement allows them to continue using that area for parking. We're not in the agreement, we're not obligated to maintain that area. If they want to maintain it, they're welcome to. So that's what this encroachment agreement allows them to do and really allows them to continue doing what they've been doing since they've been there. But provides them, you know, some additional protection.
I move to approve the encroachment agreement with the New Destination Church for parking on a portion of what is formerly Dire Street in the original town of Breckenridge. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye, aye, none opposed. Item twelve, discussion any necessary action regarding updating optimum contract.
So as you know, we. We entered into a contract with Optimum. During that, it was discovered that they had not accurately. Pretty much with that agreement, they are absorbing the upfront infrastructure costs. For the construction of fiber to all of our buildings. And it was discovered that they didn't accurately calculate. The cost to one of those and that was basically where our convenience station is. And our convenience station is right by the highway, but our water wastewater treatment plants and backways. And so they didn't accurately calculate that. Also, we wanted to add the cemetery. To that contract and have fiber outflowing as well. And so in talking to them, this updated contract, essentially they're still not going to charge us an upfront cost. For that, but they are saying they would like to extend that contract from five years to seven years. And I mean, at this point in time, I don't necessarily, you know, from a staff perspective, see an issue with that. Right now, they're not, there are not any other providers in, in the area. So conceivably, we'd be, you know, continuing the contract with them for the, you know, fiber internet services. In five years, so that's where we're at, we're bringing this back to you for that.
Do we? Will we, can we get out of that later if necessary, if a new provider were to come in, or do we have to honor that five years?
Well, seven years if you have that great contract, yeah. I mean, there's a few outs, but not men, no, I mean, we'd be in the contract for seven years, I don't, yeah.
Seven years now, these guys can do something with it then. I won't be here.
I move to approve an update to the optimum contract and authorize the city manager to update and execute the agreement.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye, aye, thank you. Item thirteen, discussion any necessary action improving an agreement for a third party independent background investigation owner incoming police chief.
So this is a contract we do with the. We have an ongoing in-house search for the permanent police chief. And as a reminder, the first review is going to be Friday, February twenty-third, uh, twenty-third, excuse me. In when, when we onboard whoever that is that is selected, we do want to have an independent third party. And this is much more, these background checks for incoming police chiefs are much more. Involved and they're very detailed. And so this is a gentleman that is involved in these, he's got a lot of history, you can see his. His credentials in the background. And I won't say that I have used him in the past when I was at Rome, I used him and he did a great job there. So that's what this contract is for. When we get to that point that you all have selected that candidate and we do a background check on it.
Well, there's only so far we can go in a time limit, try and do all of this. And if they're able to dig into things that we may not even get to, so it is good to have someone outside. Looking at these people.
And that's very detailed, I mean, even for, you know, patrol officers and things like that, we've got our city onboarding process and background checks that we do. But you know, even for police officers, it's just a much more involved process. And so you can imagine for a police chief, it's probably twice that.
I move to approve independent contract agreement with Wayne Eichel and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Item fourteen, discuss any necessary action regarding approval of B E D C recommendation for elite submersible pumping incentive.
So we've got a representative from the Breckenridge Economic Development, Development Corporation, Malin. And you want to tell them what you got?
Yes ma'am, so my name is Malin Van Winkle, I'm here on behalf of David Miller and the E D C. The E D C built and rented a building for elite submersible pumps. And in front of you is the job creation incentive that was created by the E D C and is being picked back up now. The incentive is for the creation of full-time new employees. That live within twenty miles of Breckenridge, it is a four-year incentive package. Are there any questions?
What, what do you look at it cost?
So it is going to be five thousand dollars per employee. Up to ten, per full-time employee, they have to be on, on with for at least nine months. Yes, sir, and that's a max of ten full-time employees a year.
And when does, is this necessary before it starts now, or is there, whenever it's approved by us?
Whenever it's approved by you, yes, sir.
What are they out of?
Elite submersible pumps, they're here in Breckenridge.
Breckenridge, okay, I don't need to tell them the best.
Cell boxes.
Yeah, yes.
So the E D C board took action to prove that you guys take the final action, correct?
I move to approve B E D C recommendation for elite submersible pump incentive as presented.
Motion and second, all in favor? None opposed. Thank you again, ma'am. Item fifty, discussion any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash O two. Appointing Kevin Kutnick to serve in the board of adjustments for a term set to expire November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
So we have our planning and zoning question, they meet generally once a month if we have any. The board of adjustments, that's. Well, we have another one. But for the board of adjustments, they also meet once a month, as long as we have something going, but they are a seven-member board. And currently, in the last renewal, we had Mark Reyes, Leslie Hall, Turner Ball and Beau Asher, their term expired. And everyone decided to renew their term and be reappointed except for Mark Reyes, so we do have a vacancy on that board. And I did, I have put out multiple times for. Hoping to get people to, to want to participate on our board, whether it be board of adjustment or planning and zoning. And for, that is the only application that I've received. And he is interested in serving on the board of adjustments with us. I mean, he would be taking Mark Reyes' position and then there's a term that would expire on November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five if y'all. Are okay with that.
Well, I was on years ago and had to twist my hand. To come off, once, once I got on there, there was a lot to be learned, so it was a good deal. And you hope people will take advantage of helping and serve on committees like that for the city. So, okay.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two, appoint Kevin Kutnick. To serve on the board of adjustments for a term set to expire November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Second.
Second, all in, for motion, all in favor? None opposed, thank you. Item sixteen, discussion any necessary action regarding considerations of updating planning and zoning membership requirements.
So Mayor and Commissioner, we're bringing this to you for your consideration. As Jessica mentioned, we have advertised for our website, we put it on Facebook, I've actually contacted several people. Directly trying to recruit people to serve on P and Z. And have been unsuccessful thus far, meaning the people that I contacted actually lived outside the city and I didn't know that. But you know, I'm just trying to think of who, you know, who in the committee, you know, who in the community would be a good member. So at this point, I will say the last person I contacted mentioned, well, I don't live in the city, but I own property. So there are some cities that will have membership requirements that would require either you're resident or you own property. So I wanted to bring that to you for consideration. If, you know, it's really up to you on if you want to change the ordinance, if you did, then we would bring back a, a resolution. And we do have an interested individual. That I think would be a good member on that committee.
I'd widen the gap more, maybe get some more people within the interest in serving on it.
I mean, if they own property, they are, you know, taxpayers. And they're, they've got an investment in the community and an interest in the community. So, no, that depends on you guys.
I move, I move directly in staff to prepare ordinance updating P and Z membership requirements to include city residency or owning property within the city. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Item seventeen, excuse me, discussion any necessary action considering interlocal with Stevens County for law enforcement services.
So we were contacted by a gentleman who wanted y'all to consider this and he talked about. Are you coming in? Okay, I wasn't sure, I hadn't met you. You know, we just, citizens are not allowed to put items on the agenda, they have to contact one of you all to put that on. And I, you know, we contacted Commissioner Blake Hamilton and so this item is on the agenda, so. Blake, I'll let you kind of take the leadership if you want to.
You stand up?
Kevin King.
You want to come up here if you would.
Kevin, oh.
Take the name and address and date of birth, please.
Kevin King, fifteen oh seven West Town, twenty nine P fifty-eight. Spoken to you on the phone, I've not formally vetted you. Right here, commissioners. Having formally served on the board or the commission, appreciate your service. The idea of combining the sheriff and the police department is not a new idea, it's been kicked around privately for years. But. I have had an opportunity to be, have some communication with both the sheriff's office and the. Police chief through my involvement from Crime Stoppers and. I stay in touch with. Michael Routh at the county judge's office, just to keep a pulse on what's going on. I wouldn't like to mention who plugged to Crime Stoppers right now, that. That tip caught Mister Not So Lucky, Oklahoma, and that tip was from the Crime Stoppers, so that was, that was a good deal. That idea, I know that. The county came over and presented it as an idea. My concern is when I thought that that might be considered, because it's never really been formally considered, it's never been taken from. What's the county's budget, what's your budget for police and what can we do to combine them and effectively serve, it's not a new idea. Post Texas has done it, Garza County. Recently understand that there's been a couple of departments in Eastland County that are doing it and it's happening all over the country. And you know, I don't know what the number of police, I mean, how many police officers are on the payroll in Breckenridge right now?
Ten, and that includes community staff.
Ten?
So, that doesn't, does not include dispatch.
How many?
How many are, I think is what this question, we've got.
How many what?
Were you asking how many, how many are active duty?
Oh, yeah, how many?
Not, not how many can we have, how many do we have?
If we've got ten slots, how many out of that ten is active?
We've got seven.
Okay, so we're three short. You know, I'm just looking at it purely from a business standpoint, I don't know how many, if we've got ten and ten over here, we've got twenty people. The idea of combining with paying thirteen more money. To do the same job, you're looking at a savings and I think that idea was brought to you. I don't, I know it wasn't discussed publicly, I think it needs to be discussed publicly. And I don't think it needs to be just hashed out by the mayor and four commissioners and the executive session and mark out and say. We're going down the path to do this way. I think with the recent resignation of our current police chief, that provided a perfect opportunity to really get down to the nuts and bolts of. Would it save the community money to do it? From what I understand, you can either do it two ways, you can go to the legislature and get something done. Or you can expand on the interlocal agreement between the county and the city, which seems like that would make the most sense. And it's not a for everything. I've heard rumblings of people think, well, if Breckenridge is losing their police department, we're on the way down. I personally think there's a lot of good things going in the, going on in the county and the city. I mean, you drive by and see the, you know, recent paint job of the old Beals building, there are a multitude of things that are. Going on in the city that are positive, but I just want to see that explored, I don't think. I don't, every person I've talked to who says, man, that sounds like a great idea, why don't we look into it? I don't know how much y'all looked into it, did y'all, I mean, I know you didn't look at it from the standpoint of what is Michael's budget and what is y'all's budget? And have an idea of combining, I mean, what were the negatives that? Took you away from considering doing, I guess is my big question. I mean, I'm, I'm just posing that as a question to any of them. I mean, I'm, I'm just posing that as a question to any of them.
Oh, no question. Oh, like you can answer that.
Well, yeah, this is an agenda, I, yeah, it's a good question, right?
Yeah, we can discuss it. I mean, that's, I wanted it more than three minutes, so that's the reason I'm.
Yeah, be- before, I mean, anything that we talked about under our transplant privilege and executive session last time. But I think, you know, the more the logistical side of it is definitely open for discussion.
Yeah, personally, um, I'm on board with you. I, uh, I don't know enough about it. I'm not going to claim that I do, but I would like, I would like it to be explored, because, um, you know, we have one municipality in one county. I think it's, uh, it's, it could be a good opportunity to, instead of having twenty patrol officers do ten in the county, ten in the city, do fifteen and pay them a higher wage, maybe get better quality, um, officers or more consistent, um, effort from them. I, I would like to see it pursued a little more as well, you know? I don't think we, I think, um, I talked to you in December about doing that after Bates and put in resignation. And, um, and I think, you know, you did some, but I think, um, I don't think it was explored enough, at least to, to us on, as the commissioners and mayor.
And I think, I think it's a good point that, uh, is what Blake said, I haven't thought about a number of things I was going to say and was going to write them down, but I just wanted to, you know, I like coming here as an expert on law enforcement by any means, uh, but Breckenridge, I don't know how many counties in the state of Texas have a one municipality, but I bet you can count them on one hand. We're an unusual situation, and, uh, you know, I know what had happened. I've served on, uh, you know, I got off the, I started with planning and zoning with the Board of Adjustments, got on the city commission, got out of the fire and went, I got out of the frying pan, went right to the fire to the city, I mean, to the school board. But, uh, you know, the, if, if you talk about the county, they're going to think, oh, my gosh, we're going to lose our, uh, patrol efforts, and, you know, they think that when you talk about maybe the county and the city share a maintainer. They're going to have that same thought that, oh, my gosh, we can't give up the maintainer that stays out there for, you know, twenty-nine days a month, but, uh, you know, that's another story, but, uh, uh, we're in a perfect, I think we're in a perfect opportunity, but I, I just don't know what was the impetus for being against looking at it, I guess, and, uh, I know it was brought to you, so the idea. So I just was curious about what the negative connotations of it.
I don't like the fact of my police department being ran by somebody that can be elected based on their last name, you know, nothing against, against you or nothing, but, I mean, that's just, you know, anybody can run. You, you don't have to have any kind of background or basically anything, you just run. So that, that's my.
Do you share?
Yeah. You have a year to get your police officer's license after you get elected. Is the way the law reads.
It's not anymore.
That's what I.
Law was changed.
Okay.
There's a requirement for, uh, services along with law.
All right, well, I have to look at that again, because when I looked at it last week, that's the.
Well, here again, there's a, there's a, there's a prime example of why it needs to be discussed in an open public forum where, you know, ideas can be discussed or dispelled, that that's not the way it is anymore. I mean, that, that's, you know, that's a perfect example of why it needs to be discussed, so. In my opinion. And I don't think that it, you know, I think being proactive about things is much better than worrying about what other people think that we're, you know, I don't, I don't think people would look at Breckenridge that Breckenridge is, you know, going to disappear because we're losing our police force, you know, but it's not, it's not even a thought that we're going to lose it forever, you know? And it's kind of ironic, I'm here talking about this on the second day of the interim police chief, you know, with time in Breckenridge, I'm sorry, but, so, you know? I think it's important enough that it needs to be discussed, so. I, I don't know where you go from here. I know you, it sounds like you're on the twenty-eighth, you're already, you know, going to look at a, uh, new police chief, uh, but I think you ought to, I think you ought to take a step back and consider this, and, you know.
Sheriff Routh, what, are you, are you against it for it? What's your opinion?
Well, I don't have a strong opinion either way. I just really came to not hear the discussion. I mean, it's obviously the compound administrative headaches, but, I mean, it's, it's doable.
What's, what's your staff count and what is field in your staff? Are you full?
Yeah, so I'm counting me, we're slotting our seven position, we're four. You know, that, in lieu of, you know, my thought was a little paying eighty-five dollars an hour for a search committee, you pay eighty-five dollars an hour to some law enforcement, uh, I don't know, advisement, something, uh, that would come in and say, look at the, you know, sheriff's office, look at the police department and say, this is what we would recommend if you undertake this, is, you know, you're going to have the sheriff over all of it and, you know, designate, you know, I don't know how it would work, but when you look at it from the standpoint that, you know, I don't, I doubt it would be a money-saving situation in the first year or so, but ultimately, I think it could be. And we're a single municipality in a very large county, and, uh, I think that we ought to examine it before we just rush to go hire a new police chief, and that's why I'm here, and I don't know whether, you know, I don't know what's going to be the outcome of the, tonight, whether you're going to go into executive session and discuss it, whether you even can, or I don't know. I don't know what the protocol is for something like this.
It's not on executive, uh, session, so it won't be discussed in executive session.
Okay. Would you like to speak or say, or? I, I'm all ears if you have something to say. Okay, um, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't, I said, I, I don't know much about.
I think that, I, I wouldn't say the county is waving our arms and wanting the additional responsibility or, that's not what this is about, right? Rather, I think, as Kevin said, we are open to exploring the idea of any gains or benefits from consolidation, and you make a good, uh, point, Gary, about how it is, how is a police chief hired opposed to how a sheriff is elected? Now, I guess the argument can be made is you're still elected through elections. You have commissioners that do that, or perhaps city men, but I'm not sure how police chief is hired, but it's through elections, elected officials rather than a direct election, so I think you have that maybe still, but. Um, as it sits today, the county and the, the city have worked on a number of things. Um, the justice municipal court's one of those that we did a couple of years ago, I believe it is now. And both courts weren't as efficient as they are combined, so the county and the city both saved money, but arguably the city saved a significant amount more money than the county did. Uh, the JP is actually doing the city's job, at my understanding, at no cost to the city. Is how we chose to do that, and we split some resources, so we did that. Um, the CBDG grant's an example. Uh, the county qualified for money that we can invest in the city and for legal to do that, so the city and the county, the taxpayer gained half a million dollars by us working together. So I watched these opportunities like that, that I was gone and said, hey, you know, we did, been there, and I would, you know, the, the deal with the municipal courts combining Judge Boone and I now, before I never worked on weekends, I do magistrations, but to make this possible, I do. So I do even months, Judge Boone does odd months of working on weekends, and again, it's to the benefit of the taxpayer. Um, the chipping and paving equipment that we bought and some things we're going to help the city with in the coming years, too. We invested quite a bit, used grant money, stuff to do that, to work together. So that was my hope is that if there's an opportunity to save, and I think it's, I'll just speak for, for me, you know, I, it's my last time in public service. I've got three years left, well, two years and eleven months. And I, um, I, I think that we all work for the same people, and so if that's a benefit to the folks who pay taxes and we get a better bang per buck. And I, it's good to meet the interim chief tonight. I hadn't actually formally met him, but, uh, welcome him. But I think across the state and rural counties, retention for police officers is tough business. Talked to county judge friends of mine, it's even that way for some deputies position. It's hard to get them. You, you can go to the metroplex and make more as an officer than probably going to offer the police chief of police his spot here. And so I think it's the challenge we face living in a rural community. Is there a way that we can combine that, create a, an interlocal that gives the commission so that the sheriff isn't an autonomous elected official, even though we're brothers, we fight here in budget debt. That's the only power the commissioners court has over the sheriff is through budgetary. The same thing you would have in an interlocal agreement is the same thing we have. It's the power of the purse. It's what funds that you allocate. So I would, I mean, I, I'm totally open to exploring the idea with you all, addressing the concerns with the concerns of the county. I have talked to a county that, um, did this post, talked to the sheriff and then the city folks, and seems to be working well, the sponsors and everything, right? Because it's got people in it, and so there are wrinkles, but, uh, I think that sometimes getting out of our comfort zone a little bit, it's what we've had to do as the county, matter of fact, when we applied for the CBDG grant, we went to the legal council and said, can you even spend grant money that the county's ordered inside the municipal, municipality, inside the jurisdictional limits of a city? And that, well, they said to us, it's never been done before. We don't know. We'll have to explore it. They come back and said, yeah, you're near local. Well, the county actually has to match fifty thousand dollars for that to come in, but that's an example where we're willing to put skin in the game for the betterment of the taxpayer. And so if that can handle on this, I'm all for it. If we look at it and say, you know what, it don't make sense for a lot of reasons. Logistically, it don't make sense. Administratively, it don't make sense. Maybe there's some legal hurdle, uh, that we're, we have to cross, but if it does make sense, I'm all for it, and I think the commissioners court that when we talked about it, um, they would obviously, like you all, want to work out the details, but they're willing to, they're willing to talk as well. So whether it be paving potholes, chips on the streets, applying for grants collectively, or this, we're here to help the city, ultimately the taxpayer, and, uh, so.
I think, I think a big deal I keep hearing more and more is the sheriff selected, the police chiefs appointed, and what, I mean, I don't, I'm really not sure of what the, uh, negatives are to that, that, you know, I haven't thought of. Maybe somebody can shed light on that, but, uh, you know, it seems like if you wanted to get rid of the sheriff, you would, you know, go to the county commissioners and say, this, the phone's not doing its job. We need to get rid of him in the same way would happen with the city, if the, you know, police chief was all, you know, town robbing, you're in the story, you know, you need to get rid of him, and so I don't, I think we need to get rid of either one of you. You know, you're elected, one's an elected public official, but the other public official is, you know, governed by you guys as the city commissioner, so. I don't know, there's just a number of different things. I mean, years ago, I was, my last thing on the city commission was we were going to, it came up, we needed to buy a new maintainer. At the time, wherever that was, twenty years ago, I don't believe it's been that long, but, uh, there's a quarter of a million dollars, and I said, I have no business making a determination about what, whether we should buy it, lease it. We need somebody like Daryl Shortest to come in here and tell us what to do, but then I had the thoughts, says, well, gosh, we ought to share one of the, you know, maintainers with the county, you know, in the city, and, you know, you'd have to ask, you know, Adolf Hitler to come speak, or, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, well accepted, but, uh, I think thankfully with, uh, Michael's leadership, some of these things are starting to happen with some, uh, cooperation between the city and the county, and I hope it continues, so, you know, I'm just looking at it. Um, as I said, I'm not a expert on law enforcement, but I think it's worth really looking into it from a, you know, legal standpoint and really monetarily, because if it would save money, why wouldn't we do it if, if it makes sense, so.
Can I say one last thing?
Yeah.
Um, we do this at the jails as well, the law enforcement center when that was built. We had an agreement where the city rents the office space for the utilities, and I think it ends up being around thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for that. Um, there's eight beds that the city's allowed to have for classy misdemeanors and those kinds of things. Our healthcare bill alone last year was ninety-eight thousand dollars for inmates in the county jail. In the contract, I think we could charge the city for the medicines for the folks that come in, we, we've never done that, ever exercised it part of the contract. We've been able to negotiate that with other things, but that's another thing I was thinking about. I looked today, I was writing down, I said, how, how many times does the city and county work together and what we work on? Fire is another one, and y'all take the bulk of fire of the budget there, and what we do is deal, have field, have maintenance, buy a lot of vehicles. But we, so we work together on so many things. I mean, we're literally pushing money across the desk to y'all, and y'all push it across the desk, us, we push it backwards, and so. Anyway, I just want to mention that the law enforcement thing is another deal, where we did all events and awful space, I think in a pretty reasonable rate, I would say.
What's that?
I think in a pretty reasonable rate.
I want to renegotiate.
Let's do it.
If, um, if this is something like we wanted to explore, like us commissioners, you, you and your commissioners, how does that, how does that happen, like?
Well, you, you would need to.
Or how you do that.
I mean, preliminarily, I, I did some, you know, but you would need to direct me to do that. I do want to repeat, I mean, there is, um, you know, this is just from a professional staff perspective. It's really, you know, it becomes a political decision that you guys are elected to make. Um, but when you look at partnerships, as the judge has stated, um, you know, there are benefits when you can, um, streamline and, um, increase efficiencies. Um, and I think that there could be some savings over time. Um, we have to really get down and analyze each budget and put the pen to paper to, to figure that out. Uh, I think you could go through and, I mean, if it's something that you guys are interested in and identifying, you know, what are the challenges? Um, and if it's, you know, because, I mean, you do have an elected official that's accountable to the voters. Some of those are inside the city limits and some are outside, um, but he's not necessarily accountable to you all. Um, whereas if you have a staff member, a police chief, then he's accountable to you all. Um, so there's that level of, you know, accountability that you have with that staff member. Um, you could probably look at ways to incorporate that accountability through an interlocal. Um, so those are things that, you know, could be explored, but it really comes down to the question of, you know, what you guys are wanting to do on that. Um, and, you know, I, I, I'm not from here. I know I've heard that it's been talked about over a month, um, but I don't know what's been said and where people are coming down. I mean, you guys may have more knowledge on that, because you're, you know, you've been here.
Well, I was born and raised here, and I've never heard it actually discussed formally. It's been at the coffee shop or over a cold beer. But now I think it needs to be discussed formally, so, you know. I don't have some big thin dead ass word to come down here and say my piece, and now sit up.
There's some big old action taken on it. We'll just need to discuss it later then.
Okay.
All right.
Unless someone wants to take action.
Go ahead.
Yeah, unless someone wants to make a motion, um, to, to direct staff to do something or to, um, revisit it at a certain time, but otherwise.
Well, I'd just say, when do you think about hiring the next police chief on February the twentieth?
Well, the first review of applicants is the twenty-third, so the deadline's.
You're going to start the process. I would hope you would do it tonight, but that's just my personal.
I mean, I, I want to see at least it explored, so I move that the city manager explores in more detail the budgetary savings and, and streamline possibilities of combining the sheriff's department and police department.
Second, all in then. All in favor? Pos?
No.
Okay. Does pass two to one, will, are we all right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, at this time, we're going to go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter five, one, Subchapter D, Texas Open Meeting Act, the, my local city commission already said, we're in that session, we'll all meeting, we'll discuss. State we're returning. They can assess your point.